And like to open the meeting with a moment of reflection. And if you would, if you can keep in your intentions or your prayers, think about my younger brother who passed away unexpectedly last night. And now I would like you all to rise and we have a special person in our group here. Mrs. Ann Steven, who's going to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ann. Why don't you come up to the podium so everybody on TV can see just who it was? The reason that I invited Ann is because we had a very long meeting, the last meeting, and for years you've been attending and you stuck it out. You were the only one.
Well, it's all informational. And I'm Ann Steven and I'm a resident of Del Norte County, have been for 53 years, minus three in Oregon. And my son Bill is Commander Steven. And thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Government is only as good as those who participate, so thank you. Any action taken out of closed session? Any introduction of new employees to the board? No? No new employees? Okay, at this time the Chair asks for any additions or deletions to the agenda. In order to be placed on the agenda as an action item, it has to have risen subsequent to posting of this agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Are there any such items? Okay, so what we're going to do though is we will go ahead and pull item number 23. Yeah, unfortunately, item 23 deals with a, wait a second, that's the, that's the wrong number. So we're talking about the sign ordinance, correct?
That is my fault. It should have been item number 21.
Correct. Okay, so, and just for those that came to talk on it, it's one of those things when you do an ordinance, it has to be posted in the newspaper to give prior notice to the public to be able to attend to speak to it. And so we will make sure that that happens for the next meeting and you'll see it there. And with that, we're going to go ahead and receive brief reports, announcements relative to the county of Del Norte's programs or projects from fellow supervisors. And we're going to start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you. Lots to report on. After our last meeting, which was April 14th, I attended the Visitors Bureau meeting where the Bureau discussed its new brochure, also discussed we're inviting visitors and local citizens alike to send different pictures which they take about our beautiful county with the understanding that once we accept those pictures, it's our property and we can use them in our future brochures. This comes as a result of the pictures that we're currently using cost money and as far as I can see, the idea of participation from our visitors and local alike who take pictures are just as good as some of the professional ones taken. So we'd like to encourage those to take pictures of beautiful places around Del Norte County and get it to our Visitors Bureau. If you've not noticed, the long vacant former fish market at 400 Front Street is in escrow and lots of things going over on these days. New owners Troy Duncan and family members and friends have begun to clean up on this building. I'm really very excited to see what's going on there soon at 400 Front Street in the city. The Take a Bite Out of Blight has a new partner. I'm happy to report the Wild Rivers Foundation will be sponsoring a major blight cleanup in late July, early August. Thank you, Wild Rivers Foundation. While meeting with the Wild Rivers Foundation, I heard for the first time the words Vaccine for Poverty. Now, I heard it actually once kind of going through, but I really didn't know much about it. But I learned that this program's enthusiastic support of eradicating illiteracy in Del Norte is something that I can enthusiastically support. We all know the sobering facts of a child who does not get a good reading education and has poor reading skills. They're more likely to be less successful in life than someone with good reading skills. And so as a certified multi-subject clad credential teacher, I will very happily volunteer my time in this wonderful program called Vaccine for Poverty. And I hope to see many of you here also looking to volunteer to help read to children, teach them the skills necessary so they can be successful in life. And it starts with reading. Later in the week, I met with Megan Wall. She's from the Sierra Service. I met in the CDD conference room with the CDD Department. There's a group of youth volunteers who will be deployed in Del Norte County June 28th to August 9th. So we met with our code enforcement officer and we will be looking for projects for this wonderful group of youngsters, young people, to become involved with in helping clean up our county and helping those with real needs and fixing up their homes. And they'll be here and we'll have work for them to do and with great appreciation. The recently approved Point of Honor Monument at the escrow is in the news. The committee has been meeting with a number of businesses in the construction of the five-sided obelisk, including a meeting with Home Depot in Crescent City who has and continues to make a commitment to assist, recognize, and support veterans' projects in Del Norte County. I also attended the twice yearly Redwood Coast Homeowners Association to listen to citizens concerned about the parks problems, some of the social issues that surround them in the bush around the location, around Leif Circle and Washington Boulevard. A lot of drug use and other criminal activity going on there. And we told them, and the sheriff knows about it, we'll be very much involved with helping keep that HOA and the people who live there as safe as we can. I attended a Calor Lifeflight presentation at the Senior Center last week. The presentation of Calor Lifeflight offers a healthy discount to seniors who will most likely need air service out of our local hospital for continued medical service. Three out of four people who are on these flights are seniors. So that part of the plan, Calor, not Lifeflight, needs to be fully vetted to our senior population to get that important membership onboard. Last Thursday, the Library Board opened discussion in priorities for its future library under its five-year plan. So again, I ask the public to contact the library trustees, just go on down to the library and give us your opinion on where you see the library, what it should do, how should it function. We're moving away from print, we're moving more to electronic kinds of programs. So let us know your opinion to the library trustees so they can help formulate the master plan, the five-year plan. Participated in a future facilities meeting to discuss health and human services planned expansion and also to discuss the national motto, "In God We Trust," to be adopted or not, and appropriate language signage placed below the county seal. IT was at that meeting and requested board direction under the motto before we proceed. And we'll be talking about that in item 25 today. I attended the Solid Waste Meeting where new public member Angela Glor was introduced and welcomed. This past Saturday, I did a bit of volunteering myself. A group called Just Serve organized by the LDS Church and Crescent City. Public Works Director Eric Weir supervised the dispersing of 100 cubic yards of wood chips about the grounds at Kid Town. That's right adjacent to Front Street Park. Several pastors were on hand of this interfaith fellowship council. There were about 60 volunteers there. They joined hands for this Kid Town effort, thanks to all of the volunteers and to the group's organizer, Craig Bradford. Last Friday, April 24th, we met for our monthly Chamber of Commerce meeting. It was there that the Chamber President Cindy Vossberg announced the results of a survey of Chamber members on the subject of panhandling. As a result of that survey, the Chamber will be sending two letters to both the City Council and the Board of Supervisors. It won't disclose those letters at this time, but it's my intention to ask Chamber Visitor Board Executive Director Jeff Palmer to present both letters and its contents to our Board when it meets May 11th. And I just learned in the mail yesterday that the Area One Agency on Aging, a committee of which I serve, sent a letter on March 20th to both the City of Crescent City and the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, supporting the construction of Point of Honor Veterans' Monument located at the escrow. I was aware of the action, but I was not aware when the letter was sent out. It was March 20th. And I received a copy of this yesterday. The Board believes the monument will honor our local veterans, many who are seniors, and recognizes the veterans and their families who have made sacrifices in service to our country. Thank you, Area One Advisory Board, and thank you, veterans. And finally, it was my extreme pleasure to address the Crescent City Women's Club at the Masonic Lodge last week and commemorate the Women's Club's 100th anniversary. And that's my report.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. I attended a tri-agency special meeting where we were just cleaning up some paperwork for the negotiations on the 400 Front Street property. I attended a North Coast Resource Partnership meeting in Wayrica, California. Jim Barnes, the county engineer, and I went to that meeting for the approval of the criteria for the new projects and solicitation for those projects is now, solicitations for projects are now out and going to be looked at by the North Coast Resource Partnership. And we do have some projects that we do want to submit, so we will be keeping an eye on those. As Supervisor Gitlin said, we attended a future facilities meeting, had a meeting with National Parks about a trail that they're proposing to construct from Jed Smith that's going to come out close to the Hayuchi Cafe as well as the Hayuchi Hamlet. There was a property owner that was concerned with the impact of his property with the trail getting so close to it. Hopefully those problems will get resolved if the trail is going to go forward. Attended this special board meeting, Raising of America, that Chairman Finnegan put on, I guess. Anyway, we got to watch that little movie. Had a Nortech meeting in Chico, California, where we approved the, excuse me, another one-year contract for rural human services as a service provider. And had a LAFCO meeting yesterday where we approved the MSR for, which is a municipal service review for Redwood Park Community Service District as well as Hunter Valley Community Services District. And that's it for me. And it's my birthday.
Happy birthday. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. In the past couple of weeks, I've traveled to Marin County where we had a Coastal Commission meeting. And I'm glad to report that all of the issues that were out of the North Coast Office were moved to consent because there's been lots of positive work, I think, happening with that Office. So that was kind of exciting. The Redwood Park Association met and discussed with state parks and national parks the need for state park. They've been mandated to figure out how to raise some money to be able to be more self-sufficient. And our park here at Jed, we're getting a couple of the camping cabins, which will be nice for families that don't have all of the gear, but they can still come and enjoy camping in one of the little cabins, kind of like the ones that are out at KOA. So that's, I think, is a positive step. I also attended the Solid Waste Meeting and the Raising of America, which is a film that was very, very, it had enormous impact on what are we doing as a country with our children. And I'm not sure, I'm hoping that Chair Finnegan will be able to identify when that film will become available, if it's going to be on Channel 4, or you know, if we're going to be able to get it out so people can really start engaging and putting the idea of what we need to do for our children as step one in what we do in our lives. EMS, we met and primarily it was a phone conference, but it deals with ambulance issues. Primarily, we've just focused on Humboldt County with some service areas because they have several different ambulance companies that try to stay alive. So one will be in Humboldt County, one will be in the Arcata area. They divvy up the area. We're fortunate enough that we have one ambulance company and then we have Calor. So we don't have some of those same issues. The other is that I think that we need to take a look at, and I'm not sure how we're going to get our heads around it, but we need to take a look at what kind of permits need to be issued for special events that are held in town. We had the jet ski thing that kind of collided with one group of people and another group of people. And I think that we should get out ahead of it and actually have a plan as a county board of the process that people need to go through to have special events in public areas in our community. And the other is that I was able to attend two baseball games when I was in San Francisco. So they won one and lost one. And I have a giant ring.
Cool.
Because I went to the ring ceremony. So it's pretty cool. That's it.
Supervisor Howard.
Happy 24th birthday, Mr. Hemmingson. That's wonderful. We're all going to catch up with you someday. I had the opportunity to attend my last CSAC training, which is the California State Association of Counties. They do a wonderful job at really educating you on policy-type decisions, more importantly, the workings of county government. It was basically a lot of classes that took from pretty much the month of November until present to complete. And it was awesome because I got a chance to get my graduation certificate, but more importantly, I got a chance to really mingle with a lot of folks who are in my graduating class also, the other newly electeds from throughout the state. And that relationship and that bond that we've created with this graduating class is just like that relationship you get coming out of high school. It's pretty impressive. You make some great contacts. And more importantly, you learn about issues that other counties are dealing with and hope that some of those issues can reflect back on issues we deal with here locally and more importantly, don't have to reinvent the wheel. And that's been just incredible. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, also attended the meeting with Redwood National and State Parks, specific to the Hayuchi Trail Complex and some concerns by a local neighbor. And do agree with Supervisor McClure, specific to the Raising of America, it does bring great concern about the future of our children here in the United States and most importantly, here in our county. And the leadership that Chair Finnegan has showed specifically through the work with the nonprofits here in our community, and more importantly, the Bill of Rights that he's championed, bringing forward here throughout the last couple of years. And the culmination of that Bill of Rights with the resolution that we approved last meeting is quite an honor to be a participant in that process because I see great things happening through direction of this board to our different departments coming out of that. As Supervisor Hemmingson also mentioned, attending the tri-agency meeting is great to see a project that has taken a long time to get to come to completion with the sale 400 Front Street. And congratulations, as Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, to the Duncan family and friends that are now undertaking that cleanup project. It's great and will be great to see what they do with that facility. Also attended a Council of Economic Advisers meeting, their advisory to the tri-agency. They're a group of business leaders in our community that advise on different subject matter here that are going on, specific to business and economic development. As some of you may or may not be aware, Council Economic Advisers had originally coined several years back, and I'm probably dating myself, but at least 12 years back, the term HAS199.com, which stood for Harbor, Airport Sewer, Highway 199, and Broadband Development. And it kept this community, more specifically, the policymakers in this community focused in one direction to gain a handle on infrastructure development within our own backyard. I went to a dinner with the Farm Bureau and the Catalons Association at invitation by Senator Mike McGuire Friday evening in Humboldt County. And I just wish I had this guy's energy. He is absolutely incredible. And how he's been able to make it to our district so many times in the last several months is just absolutely crazy. But to that extent, Senator McGuire specifically brought forward an issue that impacts what we do in business. And I said, we, as in Alexander Derry, my other life outside of the County Board of Supervisors seat, leases on fishing game property. I know Supervisor Hemmingson has been dealing with this at least for the last two years through the county RCD. But several years ago, we lost our ability to lease state lands, specifically state fishing game lands here in the county and throughout the state because of the way monies were essentially paid into the state of fishing game. They did not come through the general services budget, instead they came in through the RCD. And lawyers basically got involved and said, hmm, that can't happen any longer. And in the interim, the farmers and folks that are utilizing those lands for productive values have lost the ability to lease those lands. And it's been tied up in regulatory turmoil and attorneys for the last several years. And Senator McGuire has talked with Chuck Bonham, who's the Director of Department of Fish and Wildlife, and has promised us, promised us that this issue will be cleared up by the fall of 2015. And I'm really happy to see that happening for many, many reasons. Also had a meeting with our local guides, and I won't discuss it any further since it is an agenda item here today and a very important agenda item for us all to address. Also attended a meeting yesterday in Humboldt County that the Humboldt County Community Development Department put on, specific to groundwater regulation and management under the new state groundwater act. Humboldt County has done a great job getting on the forefront of this. I dragged Randy Hooper along from the Community Development Department to listen to the presentations that were made yesterday. And I believe Humboldt County, with a similar ranking in the Eel River Basin of moderate, is sharing our concerns with the ranking that DWR staff have given Del Norte, specifically the Smith River, of a moderate ranking. And what that triggers for us is creating a plan and a lot of headache when we might not necessarily need it. So we are exploring at this time with the Community Development Department how to possibly revisit that ranking with the state and seeking, seeking the help of Humboldt County in doing that since they have similar beliefs. And lastly, and I won't mention any names, but I'm really happy that one of my very, very close friends finally got off the pot Friday night after many years of being a bachelor and proposed to somebody he truly loves. And if you're watching right now, I'm really happy to participate in watching this moment in your life come to fruition.
If I could just follow up-
You're not going to spill the beans?
On that-
Maybe Mr. Hemmingson will.
No, on the groundwater issue and the plan, it is not set in stone. I did find that out at the North Coast Resource Partnership meeting. It's not set in stone and we can look to see if we can get that changed. So we should probably work together on that a little bit and get together with CDD. And I won't say anything about ex-supervisor Sullivan.
Okay, well, enough of ex-supervisor Sullivans. Congratulations then. Along the lines of that water, we need to keep an eye on that because unfortunately, we were classified in that moderate group that showed a decline in our well of between two and a half and 10 feet. That's a huge disparity. And whether they were measuring Lake Earl after it was breached, or I have no idea, but we really need to pay attention to this so we don't get grouped in with some of the Central Valley, who is in the same category. Yeah, yeah. Also want to congratulate Supervisor Howard for completing the CSAC new Supervisors Institute and even more so for recognizing that it is those relationships and that communication with fellow supervisors, building those relationships, whether it be on this board or statewide, that really allow us to do the work that we do. I attended a first five meeting, Children and Families Commission, which I'm a board member. I attended a CSAC, the State Association of Supervisors Finance Corporation. This year, we were able to raise an additional $500,000, so about $3.5 million going back into CSAC, the State Association of Supervisors, which allows them to continue to do the lobbying work on behalf of counties without raising dues from the counties to participate. Attended the Local Transportation Special Meeting where the Safe House of Schools was awarded Amber Weir. Also, the Raising of America, which was well-attended by school board, members of the city, member of the Childcare Council, member of CASA, Children and Families Commission. I thank all our, well, all the supervisors except for Supervisor Gitlin that participated. And realizing just how important this issue is, we need to go even further upstream. It's not just the third grade reading that tells you as an indicator of whether you're going to graduate from high school, but now it's the vocabulary at 18 months. And you really have to look at the newborns, who's talking to them, who's treating them. The, I was asked when it's going to be let out. There's several different variations. The one-hour movie that we got to see will be shown again at the Elk Valley Rancheria, I believe, on May 26th, where they will provide dinner for the community as well as free childcare. There are also going to be some abbreviated movies, a 13-minute one and 11-minute one that we're going to try to get throughout the community because the reaction of the people that were here understood just how powerful it was. And we, as a community, while we can't influence Washington perhaps to make those decisions, we can make them ourselves as prioritizing our children, how we're going to raise our children. And it all ties in with our budgeting and our children's Bill of Rights. So thanks to all those that participated and will continue to participate. I also attended a California Transportation Commission meeting where I sit on the Technical Advisory Committee that will develop a pilot project to find out how we're going to pay for our new roads, taking into account, without trying to repeat myself too much, the electric cars and the Priuses and cars like that are not paying their fair share because they're not paying as much gas tax. And even if everybody paid a fair amount of gas tax, it still couldn't sponsor it. Sorry for you Prius people, but we'll put a drop box for an envelope at the gas pump there. And that's going to take, that was orchestrated by the legislature. And so I'm one of 15, one of two supervisors that gets to help out to make sure that the burden doesn't fall on rural counties. Also, I attended a meeting with the Caltrans hierarchy and members of the officers of the Local Transportation Commission, trying to get an update on Highway 199. And we should have some timetables out to you probably by the first of June, so everybody can know just where we are with that project. I also had conversations with members of our Fishing Game Commission, as well as Supervisor Howard Hemmingson. And we're going to hear a little later, I can't commend the guides enough, especially Mr. Koopman and Ms. Cunningham have been very involved in the rest of you. So I can't, I'll try to bring that up as quick as I can here so we can get into that. That's just an atrocity that was allowed to happen. And on a good note, I got to spend some time this weekend with my father celebrating his 91st birthday. And with that, we will go to the CAO's report.
Over the last two weeks, I've spent quite a bit of time dealing with different personnel issues, had meetings with multiple members of the public, had a meeting at the request of the city manager from Brookings with the Crescent City City Manager and Gold Beach Administrator regarding potential avenues for regional economic development. And those will be coming back at some point, any suggestions. Attended the tri-agency meeting and had a number of meetings with different departments, department heads and employees.
Very good. Glad you brought up the tri-agency again. I know Supervisor Hemmingson, is it Supervisor Howard, you on that also?
Yeah.
Okay. We had been working on that for years, on that front street, and I'm just ecstatic that you were able to make some headway on that. Good job. With that public comment, any member of the public wishes to address this board on an item that is within the purview of the board, please step forward. If it's an agenda item, you might want to wait until we bring it up. But if not, please state your name and have at it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Callie Martin. I cannot wait until 20, item 25 is discussed because I have a prior medical appointment. And countless studies have shown that most people believe in God. These are people of different cultures, ethnic groups, and religions. These people may not attend religious services or acknowledge membership in any particular group. Historically, people have had, shown a need to worship. Today is no different, but has the emphasis changed? Do we worship fame, money, power? Have we placed our dependence on these and government entities? What is the state of our society, country, and other nations? As I listened to the news this morning, senseless rioting seems to become an acknowledged form- form of expression. Do two wrongs make a right? Have people become dependent on these and turn to governments, other powers and self-medication like drugs, alcohol and immediate gratification, no matter the consequences? And in keeping with Supervisors McClure and Finnegan's comments on the future of our children, to whom are we entrusting their welfare? Perhaps we need to pause and reflect that this nation has turned away from the original concepts of our documents like the Constitution. They were founded on a belief in God, though in no way should any form of coercion be used on anybody who does not believe. Perhaps now is the time to acknowledge this trust. Let the words "in God we trust" become part of our county statement.
Thank you. Next, please. Anybody else? Go ahead. Is that sign of sheet-
Yeah, Lori was next.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Lori. I live in Crescent City. Two weeks ago, April 14th, a group of citizens came in front of the Board of Supervisors to speak of the danger that PWC present to swimmers and surfers when they are launched from the beach next to the old Beach Comer Restaurant parking lot and operate in the surf. Four days later, county officials are quoted in the April 18th triplicate newspaper as saying that they are no longer, they no longer think south of the old restaurant is a beach frequented by bathers, and therefore they will not enforce the requirements of PWC to operate five miles an hour within 200, within 200 feet of the shore. I disagree with this decision, and I believe this announcement puts the public safety at greater danger. In the mid-1990s, a vehicle operating in a reckless manner rolled over a young girl while off-roading on South Beach, causing her serious bodily injury. After that incident, citizens organized and an ordinance was put into place to limit motor vehicle access on South and Norch, North beaches. We are seeing an increase in use of this beach by motor vehicle activity, and it is not compatible with the other uses of this beach. It is important to keep in mind, all people have access to the beach, but not all activities are allowed.
Thank you. Anybody else was to speak?
A beach for beachcombing and surfing and walking, and it talks about the recreational uses. The first one is walking and beachcombing, and it clearly identifies the whole area. So this, what happened is completely contrary to our LCP. And something, I mean, what I observed there is that not only did we have concentrated use right in front of businesses that might not always want that, you know, but we, we also, the footprint was huge. The people who are enjoying the beach outside of the jet skis were about as far away as the whole area was that they were taking up. So like, their footprint is triple whatever they are at because the noise level is so outrageous and it's dangerous. And I walked through the area just to experience it. The fumes are like standing behind the worst smelliest diesel truck in the, you can imagine. And nobody wanted to get close to those smells, nobody wanted to get close to all that noise. I was, then I went birdwatching in Front Street Park, and the noise carries across the whole water. And then I looked up noise information, and yeah, noise really carries across the water. So what are we going to do? Summer is approaching. We are gonna have that beach packed. I know, I know that one, I know that beach really well. It's my neighborhood, I walk it all the time, I get exercise out there. Little kids in that little stream that flows down, it creates like a little shallow ponded area when the tide moves in. That's where all the babies play. So I, I would say we need a temporary moratorium on this to sort things out. And I have this information, I didn't have time to make extra copies-
I'd ask you to wrap it up, please.
But I will get that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else was to speak at public comment? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment. We have a timed item for 10:30, which is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with a temporary closure of a portion of Union Street pursuant to section, looks like 2201-4A of California Vehicle Code. Community Development, please.
Good morning. I'm Randy Hooper from the Community Development Department, and this isn't a new project to the board. This was introduced to the board back in November, and the direction from the board at that point was to proceed with the project pursuant to the vehicle code. That entails adoption of a resolution and conducting a public hearing. So here we are. Essentially, this project would be work in conjunction with a larger cleanup and abatement project. It would effectively close a portion of the Union Street right-of-way east of Iowa Avenue. It would be accomplished via the placement of boulders in the right-of-way and K-rail blocking Union Street right-of-way. All the work would be funded by a grant from CalRecycle. That was through the Farm and Ranch Cleanup Grant Program. And again, previously, the board did direct staff to prepare the resolution and conduct the public hearing. What you've received since November includes letters of support from the current sheriff and the CHP. What we're requesting today is the public's input and ultimately the approval by the board of the resolution so that we can move forward with this project, which I think we can all agree is very needed in that area.
Thank you. Before I open the public comment, Mr. Mason?
I'm here mostly if the board has questions about specifics about the area or the project.
Okay. Well, with that then, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and invite people that wish to speak on this matter to step forward. Identify yourself. Limit your comments to three minutes. Try not to repeat the person ahead of you. Who wants to go first? Anybody? The rest of the board, please.
Eileen Cooper. That, I'm very glad that we're taking action to clean up that area. And I hope for a beautiful bike trail through the Union Street and all the way to Elk Creek to downtown. It will move the whole neighborhood with a wonderful trail. And I don't think we'll ever get there unless we take some action. It's costing the community a lot to clean up the area, and I really appreciate this move. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Yes, sir.
My name is James Ruth.
Go ahead.
My name is James Ruth, and I live off on Dakota Street, which is, Union Street is this way, and Dakota Street is off of Union Street. And if you put rocks there, I won't be able to get to my property, my brother's brother's property. So I just wanna know if there's not gonna be a gate put up there? I can ask about a key, but there's not gonna be a gate, so if you're gonna put rocks, I don't know.
Did you remind me asking, do you have a house in there?
A motorhome.
Motorhome?
Yes.
Permitted?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Staff, I'm gonna ask you to address that.
Over the course of years from 2005 till now, we've worked to remove the illegal buildings, structures and campsites in that area. And recently, James moved on to his brother's property there in Dakota and parked his motorhome. He does not have a permit, he's in violation, and all that needs to be removed because it's contrary to county code.
So I guess my, so my question would be, if somebody came and followed the ordinances and the rules and the permitting process to build a residence on allowable property with sewage disposal and water, at that time, then would we make accommodations for ingress and egress with it? For that individual?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There's a, there are a bunch of paper streets in that area, so any development would require the lengthy permit process of where the road is gonna be, because Union's not a county-maintained road. It's the old right-of-way and paper street. The culvert under the road went in way back when, and it was not the county that put that in. So there's some stream restoration that really should take place in that area. So to develop and build in that area, I think Randy can speak to the permitting process, but there'd be a lot of work to be done. And to get a permit for a motorhome would require, of course, first approval of a building permit to build a structure before you could even address the application for a motorhome permit.
And if I could just add one additional point that I left out in the initial kind of overview of the project, this is a temporary closure, and so it's for an initial, an initial 18-month period. If it doesn't work, if we're, if we're running into issues with property owners not being able to access and use their property, we will have another, another opportunity to revisit that because it is temporary.
And just pigbacking off of that, if it does work, we have the option of extending it another 18 months.
Eight times.
Eight times, maximum eight times. If at that point, at the end of that period, the board feels that it's necessary to make it permanent, there's a process for that.
Okay. So I'm gonna invite any member of the public that wishes to speak on this. Public hearing is still open. Any other comments? No? Then I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for comments and possible action. Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. I, I have a really hard time, the thought of closing roads, especially the thought of closing roads because you're trying to control behavior that we, you know, that is either, it's not, it's blight. I get that, you know, because we've had this same discussion for years about Pacific shores. And the bottom line is that we don't close those old roads out there because we have to allow landowners access to their land. And I believe that this is denying an APM number their right to access. And so for me, I can't support it. I understand the permitting, if you're gonna build a building out there or whatever, but if I own a piece of land, I have the right to access that. And I have the right for ingress and egress. And that ingress and egress of that railroad area on Union Street has been there, you know, it's been there since I was a kid. So I'm not sure that closing it temporarily nine times for 18 months each time, I believe that that is on the edge of a taking from a homeowner who has right for, a landowner who has right for ingress and egress. So I will have to oppose this. I understand the horrific condition that we've spent lots of money cleaning it up, and, and it's been year after year, there's been activity that we don't really like, but we have that same activity that we really don't like at Pacific shores. And so I feel that we're picking on a landowner, and so I can't support denying someone their, their right for ingress and egress.
Supervisor Howard? Comments? Motion?
Supervisor McClure makes a really strong point in this case, and I really appreciate the reference to Pacific shores, something that we've been dealing with for decades, absolute decades, and it's a property rights issue. My question, if I may, Chair Finnegan, is there any other way that Community Development Department can think of to help resolve this issue without putting up K-rails and barricading?
Dave can probably elucidate a little more eloquently on the issue, but I think, you know, what we find, and we do the staff analysis of the situation, is if we don't do something to address the access issue, it's gonna be a continual problem. And so because we have this funding source available to do the cleanup, yeah, we could do a cleanup, but the question would be what would happen after we do the cleanup? Is it, it's just gonna be a residual problem that continues to occur? In terms of other options, you know, really vehicular access into the area is the problem. And so that's, we focused any solution on how to address that problem because that is the central issue here. How do we prevent vehicular access, which is taking the trash into the area and doing the, the illegal and unpermitted dumping?
And let me just follow up on that, address your concerns. The, the road we closed to vehicular access, and so pedestrian access, bicycle, horse, whatever, that'll still be available. The major problem we have is not just with the dumping, it's illegal camping, the campsites, the human waste, the trash that goes into the Elk Creek watershed, the damage to riparian habitat, the illegal timber harvesting for firewood. There's an old-growth spruce tree back there that somebody cut down to make firewood out of, and then after they got it on the ground, their chainsaw wasn't long enough to go all the way through it to buck it up, and it's just laying there. And it's about yea tall on its side, which just, it survived a tsunami. The destruction to the environment in there from this illegal activity, people driving back in there and tearing the place up, far outweighs the need of the occasional person that might want to go look at their property that doesn't want to get out and walk. Certainly, there's no right to illegally camp in that area. Those are my feelings on that subject. We've got a couple of issues, and I'm gonna, had a little experience with this in the Klamath Glen over the levee, which was just a haven for illegal dumping. It took the cooperation of the property owners, and we allowed while we dropped K-rail in bollards and a lot of it, there was a point of access, and property owners did have a key available to them if they required to get in their vehicular traffic. Along that lines, couldn't there be some accommodation on Union for that same type of procedure? And it also would allow for emergency access, because I know you have fires and I know you have crime back there. So the sheriff has to get back there, the fire department has to get back there. How, how are we addressing? Is there another, I mean, you don't have to open up the whole thing, but there has to be at least one avenue of ingress and egress for vehicular traffic into that area.
Right. And gates have been taken into consideration as a, as a potential option. We were looking really, you know, a way to maximize the funds that are available to us, and K-rail and boulders is a really cost-effective approach. Dave's had some discussions with emergency response person on, they don't have any issue with basically pulling the K-rail out of the way if they need to get in there to respond to an emergency. Accessing property from a residential standpoint, giving somebody a key, similar to the Klamath situation, you know, obviously if a gate was the way we went, that could, that could be a consideration that's taken into effect. But again, from a cost standpoint, it's not as cost-effective as, of an approach to do the gate relative to the, to this option.
How many areas are you gonna drop this K-rail in bollards?
Just this one. This, this the-
Just at the entry?
Just at the entry. There's a creek that runs underneath the road, so there's really no way to go around it without crossing, you know, an eight-foot-deep swamp, essentially. So that's why we picked this particular location as being the most effective and the most cost-effective way to address the situation. If the board chooses to use it, spend a little bit more money and go for a gate, we could certainly, you know, go that direction.
How many APM numbers were that number?
I think approximately in the range of about 30. It's, it's gonna be plus or minus 10.
But that's not that many owners. A lot of those are contiguous.
Correct. Yeah, some of the, actually, most of the parcels are consolidated ownership.
And that one owner, the Ford County LLC, that owns the majority of land back in there, they're highly in favor of closing that off because they are essentially the victim of the majority of the criminal activity.
Can I be addressed, please? I know other supervisors have opined in on this, and I'd like to get some questions.
Supervisor Gitlin, please.
May I be recognized, please?
Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you. My concern on this K-rail is not unlike some of my colleagues. It's how does someone get access to their property? And I'm kind of looking toward the gate as an option. You know, we, you know, we've done a major cleanup back there. Our blight program's done a major cleanup back there. We were, I don't think we put a den in it. We volunteers pulled out four and a half tons of debris. I don't think we made a den on it. But having just completed one which involved boulders over at Endert Beach Road at the Fish and Wildlife property, I don't think the boulders did much to prevent people from coming in, illegal camping, going in and assaulting the property. So I'm, I'm a little concerned. I, it's the first time I'm hearing about the boulders. And I'm leaning more toward a gate, a secured gate, where there's keys accessible so that the gentleman back there, Mr. Ruth, has access to his property with prior knowledge, and then other people have access to their property should someone want to begin a building project or whatever. It's very, very beautiful back there. So did you, the gentleman, do any kind of research on the cost of a gate as compared with a- kind of research on the cost of a gate as compared with a K rail?
Did some preliminary work on that, and to do a gate that's sturdy enough to withstand vandalism requires substantially more than the K rail did. And so, we didn't really explore that very far. But if, oh, did you have something?
It's my understanding-
Do identify yourself for the record, please.
Uh, Rose Anna Bauer, Assistant Engineer. It's my understanding you can't block access to a public right of way unequally. So, something like a gate which uses a key restricts access to certain members of the public. I don't have the code, but I don't believe we can do that.
So, we can put K rail, but we can't put a gate that can open?
Because it blocks access to everyone, not certain individuals.
Where's the logic there?
If this is a, is this a private, private road?
This is within the public right of way. It's gonna be within the Union Street right of way. The other, you know, couple of points just to make, um, management of keys, when you're dealing with a gate, could be problematic. Once a key gets out there, it's really hard to control. Um, the other part of it is, you know, this is a public hearing, and so, we did invite every property owner that would be impacted by the project to participate in this. Um, we didn't, as far as I know, receive any letters leading up to this meeting objecting to this concept. Um, and again, the outreach that we did with the emergency response folks indicated they didn't have any issue with this approach. They could, you know, yank the K rail or the boulders out of the way if, if they did have, have to get back there. But again, emphasizing the point that we did solicit public input into this process. We didn't just, we're not trying to, you know, ramrod this approach down anyone's throat. This is what we, through, through the staff analysis determined to be the most cost-effective and practical approach to the, to coming up with a solution to a, a really big problem.
How does emergency services remove a K rail? I mean-
My discussions with the battalion chief for Cal Fire, he said they just hook a chain onto it and the other end onto their truck and put it in reverse and back up. That's a truck with a full tank of water and low gear. Yeah, not everybody has a fire truck, though, so.
All right. Well, this has been before us for years. It is a problem. There's not enough money in the state of California to clean up what's going on over there. I mean, that stuff is buried six feet deep throughout most of that property. It's unfortunate that, what was the trail that we had planned through there? Hobbs Wall.
Hobbs Wall.
That that didn't come to fruition. That would've been a great thing to have, which, by the way, had a gate designed on it to restrict access of vehicular traffic. So, to move this along, I'm gonna ask Supervisor Gitlin, you wanna make a motion?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the K rail, um, application on a temporary basis, a period of to 18 months with renewals thereof, to close off, uh, this Union Street access. That is my motion per the recommendation of Randy Hooper, CDD Department.
Is there a second? Can I get a different motion?
I would, I would ask that we, um, table this and come up with the vehicular code law of the possibility of a gate, 'cause I know we keep a gate at Point St. George, and we issue keys there. Um, and it seems to be pretty sturdy because it hasn't been vandalized in a long, long time. I hope I didn't just jinx it. But, so if we could table this and come back with a cost estimate of the, of the improvement, uh, if we were to have a gate, um, and if there's a possibility that we can figure out a way to have a gate, because you would still have public ingress and egress as far as being able to walk if you leave a walking, you know, a little cattle walk through there, and then the property owners could possibly have access. So, I would ask that we table this at this venture until we have more information.
Is there a second to that?
I have a second to that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to table. Before we take the vote on that, we all recognize the problem back there. We all wanna restrict access to that. Part of that, looking into that gate, I would also ask you to look at whether it's Michigan, Iowa, with some of the streets, 'cause I know there's other ruts that go back in there that could be designated as access if we dropped the bollards and the K rail at the main ingress and put a gate at a different spot. And I think that might be the solution.
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized, please?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is an interesting discussion and one which is, we're struggling to find an answer. I, I think the, is Ms. Bauer still here? She's not, oh, okay. I think this really needs to be vetted about the illegality issue, and we may need counsel to say, here we have an exception. Uh, just at Point St. George Beach, there is a gate there, prevents vehicles from going down there, bringing in their trash and dumping. Now, what, why is that there and that we can't put a similar kind of gate, uh, on the property of K Street? What is the, what's the-
I think a big distinguishing factor is the fact that Point St. George is publicly owned lands. It's publicly owned lands at Point St. George. What we're talking about off of Union Street would be privately owned lands, so the, the ownership is a different scenario. Access to public lands can be managed by a public agency. I think the question that Ms. McClure is suggesting we need to address is whether or not we can control that on private land, see the extent that we can on the public lands of Point St. George.
And I think we have a good enough handle on the questions that need to be answered. It's been moved and seconded to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie unanimously is tabled. Please work together to address that question. If any supervisor wants to confer with staff on a specific question, please do so.
He's, he wants me to wait.
No, I'm-
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking that we should also probably take a look at the values out there and see if we could possibly, with the conservancy's help, and knowing that that area is very environmentally sensitive, that we should maybe possibly look and see if we have willing sellers and maybe take a look at acquiring that property.
Okay. I think that's out of the purview of what we're discussing. So, I'm gonna move this along. Thank you very much. We're running a little bit behind. We do have a 10:45 timed item, uh, presentation by the upcoming five Del Norte Fair Rodeo Court Queen contestants. Who wants to take the lead here?
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us today. I'm Michelle Webb, the chairman of the new Del Norte County Fair and Rodeo Queens Ambassador Program. And as you can see, we have five willing participants that stepped up and tried out this year to do it. Um, I'd first like to be on official record to thank the voters of Del Norte County, 'cause if they had not passed the, uh, the vote, we would not have a fairgrounds. So, it not only preserved the already happening events at the fairgrounds that are already ongoing, but it also created opportunities for new, um, events to come forth. We're looking at this as a youth development program, and so you inviting them here today helps them get public speaking skills, engaging in civic government, 'cause none of these girls have ever been to a Board of Supervisors meeting. So, already their education has gone forth. So, without further ado, we'll let them introduce themselves and talk with you.
Perfect. Who wants to go first?
Hello. Thank you for inviting us and for this opportunity to speak-
What's your name, honey? What's your name?
Brinkley Webb. Thank you for inviting us and for this opportunity to speak with you today. I am 12 years old, and I attend Breadwood School Elementary, where I am a four-year-old student and on leadership council. I got my horse, well, I started riding horses when I was four years old at the R Ranch in Hornbrook, California. And when I was five, I started riding this barrel horse named Dolly. She ran home, and then after that, I knew I wanted a barrel horse. It took me a few years until, so I could convince my parents to get a horse. Until I was 10 years old, they told me that I had to pay for a horse. And I thought, where could I get that kinda money from a 10-year-old? So, I went into 4H, and I did a penitentiary rabbits. There, I won $800. And then, I got to go to the R Ranch again, and there I found my new horse Bentley. I bought him for $800, and then I had him for two years. This year now, I have a new barrel horse named Summer. I just got her about five months ago, and now we are working together for barrel racing and doing other specific events. I'm here today to talk to you about the Del Norte County Fair and Rodeo Court Ambassador Program. I'm looking forward to representing Del Norte County Court as an ambassador. The fair has been in our area for a very long time, but not this program. The Del Norte County Fair started in 1893 in Smith River, where residents took a train from Crescent City to Smith River for 50 cents. Representing Del Norte County to me means being able to commit to promote the sport of rodeo, promote the amazing value of going to our fair, present a positive attitude, being a good role model, interacting with the youth in our community, encourage the importance of academics, and being part of our community. It is important to have this program to encourage, encourage participation and attendance to our local fair and rodeo. This program will also help make kids, little kids' dreams come true. Now, they can see kids and princesses in the fair in our county. I'm excited to share my knowledge about horses and rodeo events I love to ride in, bull riding and barrel racing. During the fair, there are two rodeos. The Junior Rodeo for Kids 18 Under starts at 9:00 AM, and the Professional Rodeo starts at 2:00 PM on Saturday of fair. For the girls who try out, the Rodeo Court Program benefits them with more practice for horsemanship skills, learn public speaking skills, a new project with your horse, helping us develop leadership skills. We will be traveling to other communities, representing Del Norte in parades and rodeos. Thank you again for this opportunity to meet all of you. I can try to answer questions if you have any. It will be very good practice for me.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
When is, when is the Spring Fair? Is that, is that the first one that you're gonna do, or are you talking about the rodeo in August?
The Spring Fair only has animals for jackpot, where you can bring your rabbits to compete or any other livestock. They don't really do any horse events during that time. But then at Saturday for the rodeo, the Junior Rodeo for us 18 and under starts at 9:00 AM, and the Pro Rodeo for the older kids starts at 2:00 PM on Saturday at the actual rodeo.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
I have some invitations for you guys to the coronation.
I have a question for you. Where did you learn to speak the way you do? You're a professional.
I took acting classes and modeling classes in Medford.
Well, it shows. Very poised.
Now, are we gonna have the other girls introduce themselves, or are you gonna introduce them, or how's that gonna work? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's hard to beat the one who goes first, girls.
Hi. I'm Madison Douglas, and I am 12 years old, and I'm running for the Miss Del Norte County Junior Rodeo Queen. And I am an honor roll student at Crescent Oak Middle School. And the reason why I'm doing rodeo court is because I wanted to enjoy the experience with my best friend, Brinkley Webb. And I thought it would be a really great experience for me and her, just to try it out and have fun together. My parents are Jennifer Douglas and Tony Douglas, and my, and I have three siblings, Allison Douglas, Karen Douglas, and Kayla Douglas. Kayla Douglas is my oldest sibling, and she is 21 years old, and she lives in Hillsburg. My brother, Cameron Douglas, he attends Crest, um, Del Norte High, and he plays tennis for Del Norte High. And my sister, Allison Douglas, she is, she goes to Crescent Oak, and she will be attending Del Norte High next year. And she's really heavy into softball. The country life, really, it's about the people who live the country lifestyle, your family, your friends, and your neighbors. It's about a community who all know one another and share the same values. It's not about the hatter, bitch, or hair. It's about the values you share. I was brought into this world by my parents who shared the love for the country lifestyle, and especially the love for horses. My mom is a former horse ranch manager, and my dad, a frequent visitor and customer at the ranch that 18 years ago and started our family. The country life is a life of loving and defending your family and friends and doing the right thing. But more importantly, it's about being kind and helpful to others. It's about, it is also about loving and caring for your land and animals, and knowing that the better you care for them, the better they'll care for you. The country life is not always easy. It is about hard work and dedication and not quitting until the job is done. It is the way our ancestors built this great land of ours. For me, some of my best experiences and lessons in life have came from living the country lifestyle. It taught me to love and care for my family, friends, and animals. It taught me to be helpful to others. I have learned that after a hard day's work, makes your body tired, but makes your spirit feel good, almost as good as beating your last barrel time by two seconds. And while the last of my first horse was hard to get through, it taught me to understand the cycle of life. I wish that people carried and followed these simple rules of life. If people did, we would live in a much better country and much better world. If people loved one another like the way I love my horse, oh, what a world it would be.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak in front of you guys.
Great job. Great job. Next.
Hi. I'm Taylor Bainton, and I'm 16 years old, and I attend Del Norte High School as a sophomore. When I was younger, my family moved down here, and my parents bought my own place to give me and my sisters the opportunity to live a country lifestyle. By moving here, we're able to have horses, sheep, ducks, chickens, dogs, and cats. With horses, I get to help my mom with lessons and help her as a trail guide to inform people who may not live a country lifestyle, what horses are like, and how they can help your personality come out. I also enjoy dance and cheer. I ran for Royal Queen to gain new experiences and memories with my horse fire. By running for Royal Queen, it's put me in new situations that have helped me grow as a person. In the future, I plan to attend Sonoma State University to pursue a career in the medical field and later in life to own horses like my mom does and help people learn about horses.
Thank you. Excellent. Good job.
Hello. I'm Denise Thomas. I'm 17 years old, and I lived in Crescent City all my life. I attend the Del Norte High School as a junior, and I'm currently enrolled in college prep courses as I plan to attend a four-year university, major in equine studies. My parents are Mick and Denise Thomas, and I have one older brother, Brandon Hensel. They've always been there to support me through everything I've done. Horses have always been a part of my life since the day I was born because my mom has always had horses. I love the summer, as is the best time of the year for non-stop riding. My horses are Lakota and Athena, and they are both registered paint mirrors. When I was old enough, I joined 4H, and I have shown rabbits, ducks, pigs, dairy, and also horses. I've currently been enrolled in 4H for 11 years. I've also been involved in a FFA for three years, and I'm currently our chapter secretary, and I'm planning for running for vice president for next year. The country life to me is a lifestyle. It's about your morals that are what matter. It doesn't mean that your clothes, or if you drive a truck, or if you hunt or fish, that will determine whether you're a country. It's about telling what's, no, saying what's on your mind and telling it how it is. It's about standing for the traditions you've come to know. In my opinion, sorry.
Big time.
Growing up the way I have and having a father that's a fishing guide locally has given me a greater respect for the environment and the natural resources it provides. I've participated in our local rodeo in the flags, and I plan on participating in them again this year with my horse Lakota. I've also participated in local open horse shows with my horses I have now and ones I've used in the past. I didn't start out with my own horse. I had to use other people's horses. And with that, I'm very thankful because they provided me the opportunity to participate in local Jim Cannon Series. because they provided me the opportunity to participate in local Jim Cana series. Horses have always been my passion, and they're now going to be my future. Some call me country, but it's the lifestyle I chose.
Very good. Very good. Yeah, I'll tell you a little secret, you know. I get terrified when I have to stand at the podium and speak. Up here, it's relatively easy. That kills me.
I've never done public speaking, so this is hard. But my name is Bill Joe Newport. I have lived in Delmar County my whole life. My grandparents actually moved here when they were probably in their thirties or so. They're from Southern California. My parents have always lived here. I started riding horses when I was nine years old. I'm sixteen now. I'm currently enrolled in Delmar High School. I hopefully plan to graduate early next year and start college courses online, and become an agriculture teacher at UC Davis, hopefully. Yeah. With me and my horses, when I first started out, I was kinda just in the 4H group, and I didn't get to do a lot. I didn't have my own horse. But eventually, I actually leased one from Randy and Phyllis Hatfield, as some of you might know. And that horse was amazing. We ended up having to put him down. Then I got my next horse, who's Shiloh. I use him for normally like barrels, Jim Cana. I've done some rodeo stuff, done flags with him. And now I have my young horse, Tater Tot. I've done everything with him, from cow work, to drill team, to rodeo, flags, almost anything you can think of. Right now, I'm actually using him in the Grange program. I'm also in FFA. I have lambs in FFA. And to me, the country life is cowboys. It's family first, work second, and you work until the sun goes down. It's also a lot about strength. They would work days just trying to do things like fix fences, or even just trying to find water for cattle. It was also a lot about innovation. If they couldn't fix something, they'd figure out how, and they would get it done right, no matter what it was. If they're trying to fix a fence and didn't have any wire to fix it at the time being, they would even use some rope, whatever would keep the cows in. It was also about family values. They would always put their families first, and they would do everything they could for them. No matter what it was, they would work all day, just trying to get them food, trying to keep them healthy. And they'd be gone for sometimes even weeks, just moving cows across the country. It's a hard life. They also did a lot of work with... Forgot what I was saying. They had a lot of values with everything. It was all about their animals, about just life. No matter what it was, it was keeping things alive. To me, that's... That is the country life. That is me. I learned these skills best from my parents. They taught me very, very strong values, about your animals, your belongings, and especially your work, your family, and everything you have. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Well, if this is representative of the young ladies in our community, then we are gonna be okay. So, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you very much for showing up and telling us your stories. Best of luck to all of you. You're all winners. And thank you, other board members.
Yeah, this is... Chair Finnegan, this is the best part of our job, is listening to the youth of this community and their achievements. And most importantly, this reflects so well on your parents and your adult advisors. And what you've done here today just makes me so proud. So, thanks for coming in and showing your spirit for Delmar County and the country life.
I can sum it up in one word. Wow. Congratulations, parents. What a great job, and good job, kids. Outstanding.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Look forward to the rodeo. We have a timed item at eleven o'clock, so we're running just a little bit behind. And right after that timed item, we're gonna get to Blue Creek. So, the number nineteen, recognition of Department of Health and Human Services, receiving the statewide Mother Baby Friendly Workplace Award.
Hi, I'm Barbara Pearson. I'm the Health and Human Services Director, and I'm delighted to introduce the team of people who are winning this award on behalf of the county. We, as we said, selected by the California Breastfeeding Coalition for the Mother Baby Friendly Workplace. And I guess this is a longstanding informal policy that we've had in the county to be able to bring your baby to work, and to be able to breastfeed in a private and secure environment. And Dean, as you can see, is our newest member of the staff. But I wanted to introduce the people, and several of them will be going to Sacramento on May seventh to accept the award on our behalf.
My name is Sarah Tucker. I am an Integrated Caseworker Supervisor, and I headed the Baby Policy Committee when we wrote to present to management.
Good.
My name is Erica Standridge. I am due on thirty-eight days, and plan to bring my baby to work, and I'm an ICW too at the county of Delmar.
My name is Melinda Anderson. I'm an ongoing social worker in the Child Welfare Services, and mother to Dean.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Anderson, and I'm an eligibility worker for the Department of Health, and I'm the father of Dean.
Great.
I have to say that it's a great benefit for the parents to be able to bring their children, but it's huge morality for the rest of us to be able to interact with Dean. And we're excited that we have many of them.
Sometimes they're easier to catch than bringing puppies to work, huh? Well, thank you very much for the work that you do on behalf of the county, on behalf of the children and parents. I guess, May seventh, at the steps of the Capitol, twelve to one-thirty, you're gonna receive your reward. And thank you for representing Delmar County. So, it can't all be fun and games, and sometimes we get the short end of the stick here. And so it is with this next item, item number twenty-two, which is discuss and take possible action regarding the recent decision by the California Department Fish and Wildlife to close the fisheries at Blue Creek tributary, the Klamath River. Both Supervisors Hemmingson and Howard, I'm gonna ask you to co-take the lead on this, and then we're gonna open it up to the guides.
Sure. You know, this is another example, much like the gray wolf issue, where staff recommended in one direction, and the commission decided in another. They've done the same thing here without any scientific studies or anything really to go on. Very disappointing that they would take such action. And I would like to see us, you know, at least chime in with a letter, but maybe council can take a look at maybe some action that we might be able to take in negating this decision that they've made. Mr. Howard.
Chair Finnegan, if I may, I think that better help frame this conversation if we could invite Mike Koopman up to help speak to this issue. I know he's invested a lot of time into this, and would be very useful.
Yes, definitely. And Mike, I've seen some of the letters you've written, and the correspondence you had, and tactics regarding where to go next, so please.
For the record, I'm Mike Koopman, local resident and fishing guide, also representing a list of signatures, both physical and on internet, five hundred strong, and also the local guides, which we have met locally here over the last couple of weeks since this has come into play. First of all, I think that within this decision, the power that has been put into place here has not taken any consideration, any consideration locally. The proposal by a concerned citizen, or of any nature, whoever that may be, to make that proposal, has to be studied, especially in a county that serves as such economic diversity with this. You know, I mean, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, and potentially millions of dollars, out of the county. I haven't potentially... I haven't put those studies into fact. I know how much my business brings into the community, and there are many other businesses that are affected by that. With that being said, I think that the investigation that I've done here, and the lot of time and effort that I've put in, along with my coworkers on this, we've ran into roadblock after roadblock after roadblock throughout our government. And to tell you the honest truth, you guys are the only ones that have been really willing to listen to us. With that being said, I would hope that, and it is my hopes, that not only do we have representation at the next meeting within the Board of Supervisors, but also have our voice be heard throughout the state on different issues, meaning the gray wolf, and, you know, the Blue Creek closure, and all these different issues, at the highest part of government. And I don't know if you understand what I mean by that, but with the roadblocks that we faced in this, you know, we try to get through to our representatives all the way up the line, and those roadblocks keep coming in and saying, "We don't have the power to change anything. We don't have the power to change anything." At that point, we were basically stuck with where we're at. And if we can get representation all the way up at those levels, starting right here at the county level, it would be more forthcoming for all of us and our local businesses. I guess, to answer any questions that you guys may have about my investigations, would be, I'm here to do that for you today.
Why don't I ask if any of the other guides want to speak first, Mike, and then we'll invite you back up to answer questions, if that's okay? Anybody else? Any other guide wants to address the issue? Any members of our Fish and Game Commission want to address the issue? Okay. Yes, sure. Certainly.
Hello, I'm Denisha Thomas. As I mentioned earlier, my dad has been a local fishing guide. I don't know if many of you know how much of an impact this is to our community. My father makes most of his money when he fishes on Klamath during the summer and everything. And I know not just my family's gonna be affected. I know personally, a lot of other fishermen and their family, and it's going to impact their lives so much. They're going... I know we're most likely going to have a struggle now, because it's such an important time of the season that we make our money. And it's a way of life. My dad has always fished, all his life. This is how he lives. This is how he supports us. This is how I survive and get to do the things I want to do. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be able to participate in 4H, and have animals, and participate in FFA, and go to conventions and all this stuff, because with him and what he does, and what everybody else does, it supports their families, it supports the communities, and it's too important to lose that, right? And who gets to say, who gets to access a river or not? Because I don't understand how you can control a body of water when it's always moving, and it's not the same drop of water everywhere you go. So, I don't get how you can take that away from everybody. And with that being taken away, you're hurting so many families in the community. So, on that note, thank you.
Thank you. Very articulate. You know, this is wrong on... This is wrong on so many different levels, and it's probably political, and it's nastiest. There is no science to this, and there was no economic impact done. Another major faux pas. I know our Fish and Game Commission weighed in. It was ignored. The Fish and Game Commission, Fish and Wildlife staff, recommended against us. They were against it. They were ignored. It's always been, and we've had this discussion for some time, about who's managing the fisheries the best on the Klamath. And we have deferred to the UROC tribal fisheries to manage their allocations, and Fish and Wildlife to manage our allocations. And it seems that, without any science or any studies, Fish and Wildlife is now deferring to a request from... A tribal request? Is that... Do we know that? You know, I mean, I do know that that is probably one of the premier spots in Humboldt or Delmar County for fly fishing.
Right, right. And it was a tribal request. The tribal request was basically as a concerned citizen, and them protecting their resource. And I think the intention of the tribe, having talked with the tribe, was to get this out on the forefront, and get it to, you know, get it to where we can do the scientific study in that point. And we all know, having worked with government, that sometimes we have to bring it to that level to get people to actually study it and allocate monies. And monies are obviously very important on this issue. It's a very expensive study. With that being said, I think that where this really goes to is that the Fish and Game Commission themselves dropped the ball. And that's, you know, had they approved the study, the time, that point of things, I don't think there's anybody in disagreement with that.
Well, I'm gonna invite comments from fellow supervisors, and when the motion is made or direction, I would like it to include, as part of that action, to authorize travel by a member of the Board of Supervisors who appeared before that commission. Public, please.
Morning. My name is Bill Bowman, and I'm here to speak for the fish. Yes, there are livelihoods and awesome fishermen over there, Mike, Mick, Sam. They're out to make a living, and we're not gonna begrudge that. But this particular spot, Blue Creek, is a refugia. It's a cold-water refugia. Fish pile up there in the summer to stay, keep their temperature regulated. To come and pound on them when they're trying to escape the heat from the rest of the river, to me, is unsportsmanlike. If you have an entire river to fish, and you had to gang up on this little spot of Blue Creek and pound those fish there, even if they're released, they're often released in water temperatures much, much higher than they were caught in. And I've heard that there's no study... There are many studies showing that an exhausted fish, caught in cold water, released in warm water, has a very high chance of mortality. It's not just ten or fifteen percent. It's more like eighty percent. So, even though we're releasing fish, we're still doing the wrong thing by subjecting that one little area to a high pressure from fishermen. There has to be fish throughout the river. Why don't we fish them there? Leave this one spot where these fish have a chance of hanging on until the winter spawning season. Leave them alone in this one spot. Is that too much to ask? And if people have to rely on this one spot for their livelihood, our fish are in trouble, are serious trouble. So, as a spokesman for fish, give these poor fish a chance at the mouth of Blue Creek. It's not a big thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I think I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and action.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Mike, could you possibly help answer? Because I know it's a really complex system. It's not just a fish.
It's very complex.
And so could you kind of just tell the story of when fish are running into Blue Creek, when they're running up the Klamath, when they're coming down, and the types of fish that we know that go up the Klamath, and the ones that we know go up Blue Creek? Kind of the story of their migration, I guess.
Well, and this is all just day-to-day experience for me. This isn't study that's on paper.
Right, but you've been...
Right, right.
Thirty years on the river, so that...
Right, since I was in diapers, basically. You know, Mr. Bowman spoke to a very valid issue, and that these fish are trapped into this refugia area. With that being said, with that, those fish are, during that summer period, are mainly Klamath River Basin fish, whether they go to the Trinity, the Shasta, the Scott, the Salmon River. Those fish do have the availability... Those fish have, do have the availability to move freely. Okay? And yes, there is a water temperature difference. There's much debate on where the water temperature is cold from the starting of the creek, how far it goes down. There's no scientific study to prove that we are actually hooking these fish in cold water and releasing them in warm water. We don't know where that, where that blend leaves and we get back into the warmer water. As far as, as far as different genetics and times of the year, generally speaking, our lower tributary fish on the Klamath River are late fish. And they're known to, they're known to travel after, after we get our fall rains, early winter rains. So our Blue Creek fish are known to be, to come into the, to the river system late in the year. Blue Creek also has a winter run of steelhead that comes in, in, as if like the Smith, the Chetco, those times, in January, February, March, that type of thing. I think, I think there's been a misconception with this all about catch-and-release fishing that the high mortality rates, you know, and these are models that are made in completely different places. We don't really know what's going on. And I think that's where things are astre, you know, just, they're just not right within these decisions. As Mr. Bowman pointed out, you know, that there is a lot of river. There is a lot of river. There's eight miles of fishable river below, roughly eight miles of fishable river below this. With that being said, we've been here fishing these areas at a lot higher level. I know Chair Finnegan, you were in the area of the Klamath Glen and it's been a, it's been a fishery that's been there as far as I know for hundreds of years. With that being said, the studies that we do have about Blue Creek, and we do have with the amount of steelhead that we're getting returning to the Klamath River, we've got more than we've ever had. Where's the problem?
And how, when you talk about that they need to have a study, is it that we need to do temperature monitoring, fish count? What do we need to, what do we need to be asking Fish and Wildlife to say, "Look, you guys dropped the ball here, we need you to do this kind of information gathering"? What would that be?
Well, within that, within that, my suggestion, and I think the suggestion of my peers would be that, you know, number one, however those studies are done, I'm not a biologist, I don't know how those are effectively done. Number one is, is that obviously on low water years or drought years, as if you want to say it, we're going to have more of a refugee in this area. With that, if we can get this done within the next year, whatever those studies may be, I've heard of radio tagging fish, which is very expensive. But radio tagging fish, they can be caught and released and then we'll know if they are dying. And, and we can, we can also, you know, if they are trackable, be able to work together with the, with the fact-finding agency to, as guides, to be able to not only track that fish by radio, but also be able to track that fish by tag. So as a guide, if Chair Finnegan was one of my clients, he caught the fish, I see the fish, I can track that number, we know that that fish was caught, did it go on to spawn? Know where the thermal refuges are, how far it goes, how far, you know, above and beyond the creek that it actually, that it actually is, is, you know, does it extend a mile, does it extend a half a mile? Is the water warmer on one side of the river than the other side of the river? And that's all very, very good knowledge as a fishing guide to have. I mean, I have my, I have my suspicions, but it's not fact.
Right.
With that being said, I think there's, there's a way that not only the Fish and Wildlife, but the tribe can come into this and we can work together with the tribe on this. You know, they're, they're co-managers of the resource. With that being said, if we as guides who, in my opinion, are there the most, can work together with not only the Fish and Wildlife, but also the tribe, I think we can come out with some very fact-finding evidence here. And in my opinion, being there every day, I don't think we have a problem. So I'm very confident that if we find the facts, we'll know.
And as part of my major problem is the process that this has taken.
Absolutely.
It should have been a consultation between Fish and Wildlife and the tribe. And to say that the guides are there for pure profit, I mean, you're the stewards of the environment. You are one of the best champions around, the guides are, for the sustainability of the fishery.
Absolutely. And, you know, to say that we want to see the last one caught, that's counterproductive. I'm out of business at that point.
So I guess where I'm coming from is the process was breached.
Absolutely.
And it needs to be honored.
Absolutely.
We just need to know what we're asking.
So if I may address that, you know, that the process that was set up by state law specifically to have consultation with the tribes and specifically in this case, UROC, it followed a process. UROC, a concerned group, came to the commission and requested an item to be on the agenda. You know, the commission by law has to address that and add that to the agenda. And Chair Finnegan is absolutely correct. That process in this case was circumvented around the science and around the economics and wasn't fully vetted. And we have a very limited amount of time right now. Sixty days is my understanding in which we could readdress this issue. Mr. Koopman is correct, we will need to attend the next meeting of the Fish and Game Commission, which I believe is on May 6th in Mammoth. And it'll be very important to us to speak to that issue. It's also very important for us to communicate with the UROC tribe, which I've begun and reached out to and have communicated with, as I know Mr. Koopman has. And they are also in recognition that there needs to be more done, as was offered by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, to do the exact science which you're referring to. And to study this issue before we take the knee-jerk reaction, which we saw from three commissioners, to close the fishery before the science was in place. And so my recommendation and my motion would be specifically ask for our commission to attend the meeting with, personally and with a letter, specifically asking the commission to reconsider the closure and to study the closure this year, possibly reduce that zone to 500 feet below and above, which will reduce it from currently the 500 feet above and a half mile below, to allow the study and the science to take place, which was offered by the department to tribal members. And I know the tribe would like to do this, it's my understanding from tribal council, that they'd like to pursue this venue with the commission. And for the county of Delnort and the UROC tribal council to go hand-in-hand to the May meeting in Mammoth.
Great sentiment, but I know that Kylie didn't get that, so she can read it back. So why don't you shorten that motion up?
I make a motion to send a board member to the May meeting in Klamath, hand-in-hand with the UROC tribal council, specifically to request reconsideration for the closure this year and reduce the zones to a half mile above and a half mile below with a science.
Before I can offer a second on that, I mean, before that, can I have a comment, please?
It's been moved and seconded, and now I'll open it up to comment.
Okay. All right, it's seconded. I just would like to say, Mr. Koopman, this board obviously stands resolute and is with you. I suspect there's a bigger issue than fish here. This is not just about Blue Creek and fishing and your livelihoods. There's a bigger issue with the tribe. I regret the decision by the Fish and Game Commission on a narrowest of votes. I think there's an agenda there and I think there's a bigger issue and that needs to be vetted. So you can see that this Board of Supervisor stands with you and your way of life and continues to be, and I think it's been seconded, so there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, this is, I think this, this is a problem with the process in that they didn't take staff's recommendation and they went ahead and made a decision. They made policy. Somewhat like what we just did on Union Street where we wanted more information, we wanted something else to happen. We weren't really happy with what staff had given us. We didn't say no, we didn't make a decision to do something different, yet, we may. But to go against staff, I think you really have to have some real backup in what you're, in what you're deciding. And I'm not so sure that the Fish and Game Commission did not overstep their bounds. And that's what I think, their authority, actually, in what they did and the way that they've done it. You know, I could be totally wrong. But I do think there's a process that they do have to follow, whether it's coordination with the, with the county, whether it's some, something in the process that allows them to do that. I'm not sure that they can just make a decision like this without some sort of backup. And I think that, that needs to be explored as well. And if, if council could take some time to, to look at that, I would like to see that happen.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. For clarification on the motion, could you amend that to be no more than two supervisors rather than restricting it to one? And also, was it included to have authorized to engage in discussions with the UROC tribe?
Right.
Partnership, okay. Further comment? Board members, hold the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Thank you for all that showed up and spoke on this matter. Please continue to be involved. With that, we're going to go ahead and go to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull for a discussion brief, albeit items seven and eight together and item 10 for clarification.
Okay. Can you do that since it's going to be brief after this, as part of the discussion, or do you have to have separate discussion?
Seven and eight is one discussion. I see our Department of Health and Human Services Director is here. 10 is a question with regard to some issues and that can be a brief answer, however you want to handle it.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for a motion on the consent agenda?
Chair Finnegan, I would like to pull and table items 10 and 11 specifically as we still have some issues with two county departments of the West Point Board after our last meeting who have not fully communicated.
Okay, we're going to pull those for further discussion today. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda for all the other items?
It's moot.
Second.
It's moot and second. To approve of the consent agenda, items one through nine, pulling 10 and 11 for further discussion?
I think it was seven and eight.
Well, I'm going to give you your shot at that. Public comment? No? Okay, Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, first of all, I actually would like the public to know as much as these consent agenda items come and they are, they go, and we really, as a public, don't know what's going on. So I think this is a wonderful thing, this is a great day for Delnort County, that this approval and authorization to same agreements with, agreement with locumtenens.com for adult and child adolescent psychiatric services for this period of time is a phenomenal thing. It's a mountainous thing we've, we've accomplished and I'd like to speak for it. Barbara, if you're here, if you'd please come up and just tell the public what this is all about and where we have been up till now.
I'm Barbara again. This is Jack Brazil, the clinical supervisor for the mental health branch. And due to a shortage of psychiatrists that want to work in rural areas, one of our best options is to contract with Locum's providers, and we have done that in the past. So these are two of the premier national firms that I personally worked with. And we are contracting with them upon your approval to have a full-time psychiatrist here in Delnort County. And we have several candidates that those firms have sent to us and Jack has talked to several of them. One may be coming up this week, I believe.
Tomorrow, or Thursday, yeah, to come and see us. I'm sorry. Yeah, one, I spoke with Dr. Rudolph out of San Diego and he's going to come up and visit us and take a look at our agency and see, he sees children and he also, which is tremendous, a lot of psychiatrists won't. And then he also has a tremendous amount of experience in addiction treatment as well. So we'd be very lucky to have him come up. So we're hoping to, to show him how great it is up here. And he says he likes hiking and swimming and biking and said you're in the right place.
Barbara, Jack, could I just ask you a quick question with regard to this? Will this preclude the usage of what we have almost, unending usage of transporting someone who needs psychiatric services on these long, arduous ambulance rides from our remote location to areas like Sacramento? Will this mitigate that circumstance where more patients will be treated locally? Is that what the goal is here?
We hope that it will mitigate it a bit by providing a person who is here on site so when somebody is having a psychiatric crisis, particularly during the extended hours, that they can be seen at the clinic and that we can provide them with medication and some stability so that they do not need to be driven to a psychiatric hospital. This also provides support for the other medical providers in this community for a consultation basis.
Great tactic. And I think is what it goes to, is what you were trying to articulate or did articulate, is it goes a step towards prevention rather than waiting for intervention. So it's not going to do way, it's a whole different animal that we need to transport people out of town, but perhaps by giving treatment early enough, it doesn't escalate to that, to where it's needed.
It also shifts the money. We're spending millions of dollars, not millions, but at least a million dollars on sending people to psychiatric hospitals. And if we could keep that money in the county and provide people with the care they need, that will help us a great deal.
Fantastic job. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, so any public comment? Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes, and the consent agenda, item number two, there was a proclamation proclaiming May 2015 as Older Americans Month, as requested by the Area One Aging Agency Unaging's executive director. I don't see her here, but I do see Supervisor Gitlin here, who is a member on that board and can ask him to read the proclamation for us, please. Thank you.
I'll be happy to read that and also deliver it to the folks at our meeting, May 6th. And it reads as follows, "The Older Americans Month of 2015," is where we are in May, "whereas Delnort County includes a thriving community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations and, whereas Delnort County is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible and, whereas since 1965, Older Americans Act has provided services and helped older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing existing medical and healthcare systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions and supporting some of life's most basic functions such as bathing or preparing meals and, whereas these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect and abuse of older adults, and adapt services for the needs of Native American elders and, whereas we recognize the value of community engagement and service in helping older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to others and, whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by, number one, promoting and engaging in activity, wellness and social inclusion; number two, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living; and number three, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experiences of older adults. Now therefore, the Delnort County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community on this 28th day of April, 2015."
Thank you, and we'll ask you to please deliver that for us. Brings us back to item number 10.
Give it to Jerry, it's his birthday.
Older American now?
I am an older American today.
Supervisor Howard, item number 10. Well, yes, and 11. And you were wanting to table that. I know we've, this is the third meeting we've considered it.
Yep.
And I know there's some time crunches. Do you want to let us know why we need to continue to?
Well, as I've been following the communication trail, I'll turn that over to CEO Serena right now so he could fill us in.
There's been communication between the two companies and the treasurer, tax collector, as well as the auditor controller regarding a fee that's included in the agreements. That fee currently for turning the rollover with the county is 5%. The companies are not comfortable with a percentage as much as a fixed base cost. And so at this point, they're doing the research. point, they're doing the research to figure out if that's even appropriate or if it stays at the five percent. Because we don't know that at this point, it's best to delay it for one meeting. We should have it fixed by then and have a, it's either gonna be a five percent or a cost that either the board has to approve or is already in place.
Okay.
Is there some urgency to this? Is there a time? Do we have a?
Well, the sooner that we get the program in place, the sooner they can, they can provide that avenue for energy projects to the community.
Yeah, I understand that. But I mean, it doesn't go away at, at some point. I mean, does the opportunity go away?
No, not that I'm aware of.
No, there was something regarding the middle of May for perhaps the Golden State one, the RCRC one?
The resolution to enter in for the name change?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of a drop dead on that. We can check it.
It certainly doesn't happen before our next meeting. And then if there still is not agreement, part of what needs to be answered is, is it something if you enter into the agreement, if the amount that you're going to be charged for administration can be negotiated at the time somebody takes out the loan, or whether it has to be agreed upon upfront?
Yeah. And those discussions need to be, uh, need to be had between those parties, which are, are two elected departments.
Okay. Prudent thing to do. We will, at the request Supervisor Howard, table items ten and eleven. Uh, there are some budget transfers.
I would move to approve budget transfer zero four dash zero six, zero four dash zero seven, zero four dash zero eight, zero four dash zero nine, twelve through fifteen on your agenda.
Second. Further discussion? Public comment? Back to the board? Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. Which takes us to item number twenty, which is to direct the chair to sign the attached letters in support of new revenues for state and local transportation infrastructure as requested by the Director of Community Development.
I'm available to answer any questions you may have, but I believe it's fairly straightforward. We're trying to, uh, kinda take advantage of the fact that transportation funding is a high pulse, or high priority with our governor and the legislature. And so we wanna get the word out to them that Delnor County has a lot of needs with respect to our aging road infrastructure.
Yes, we do. Good. So do you wanna do it by motion? You wanna do it by consensus? What's your pleasure, board? If there is no opposition, then by consensus, direct staff to prepare the letters for signature by the chair.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Number twenty-two is to, we already did, and number twenty-three is to approve and authorize the chair to sign the MOU for EIA Health Program between the County of Delnor and CSAC excess insurance authority.
At the last meeting, we had, I had asked to postpone the decision that was voted on at the time until we had time to answer some questions for the union as, and also conduct a conference call with Alliant and the pharmacy. We did conduct that call, and after that meeting, um, union reps indicated that it were, all questions were asked and answered, and we were asking that you approve and authorize the chair to sign the MOU with EIA Health.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Uh, before I, can I ask a question quick, please? I see Norma Williams here. Norma, have all your issues been addressed on this item number twenty-three?
Norma Williams, chapter president. Uh, yes. Actually, the executive board met the day after the board meeting, and we tab, formulated our questions and sent them on to the CAO, um, and basically pressed upon having the meeting as quickly as possible so that we can make this timetable. So, um, basically, once we sat in on the meeting, we had a lot of questions. We were very appreciative of the fact, especially that a pharmacy specialist was made available. And so once we basically asked all of the questions that we had, especially in addition some more, we found that, um, basically all of our questions had been met and all of our issues had been resolved.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
I would move to approve and authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding for the EIA Health Program.
It's been moved and seconded. Public comment? Back to the board. Further comments or questions? Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Which takes us to item number twenty-four, which is presentation, discussion, possible direction regarding the county goal committees.
So on your monitors, you'll notice that we have a little bit of a PowerPoint. Try not to do these too lengthy. Um, the Board of Supervisors originally acted on a set of goals in about 1999. That's when the process started. So it's been for many years. The goals and then the subsequent goal committees were established. Through those goals, that gives direction to departments, department heads and staff, and basically their daily business, going about the programs that, the myriad of programs that are throughout the county. Um, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to revisit the county's goals, provide some input, give some history, and so we could have a discussion over the existing goals, whether or not those goals are sufficient at this point, do we need to add any additional goals, and also in regards to the goal committees. Over the years, due to changes in staffing, yeah, needs for these goal committee meetings, um, some have been, uh, some have been combined in order to be more efficient. And the question also is begs, do we need to have those separated out again? There may be some of these that we need to address a little differently. And obviously, the, the basic goals of the county have not changed for a number of years. Um, I'll go over those right now for everybody's, uh, education. The number one goal committee was the grants goal committee. It was to prioritize and coordinate the grants process. The second was safe and healthy families. That goal, to empower our community by affirming safe and healthy families, children, and individuals. Number three, healthy workforce, was also combined with number six, which is customer-focused government, create and improve a healthy workforce and effectively communicate the county's goals and objectives to staff, and manage county government to be more effective. Um, also combined was future facilities and infrastructure. And this one in particular, um, we would probably recommend that those be separated out again, primarily because future facilities, the facilities were county facilities, whether they be this building, um, you know, our, our parks, juvenile hall. Infrastructure is more wide-ranging to the entire county. And that was to identify, develop, and prioritize long-range, short-range plans. And it included everything from sewer roads, water, cable, broadband now. I mean, there are changes that have happened over the years that we may want to address a little differently. Uh, number five was a finance committee. Uh, it reviews and monitors financial procedures to ensure the county's financial resources are being managed and utilized through proactive management. And that gives, that gives a vetting process for us as well as our treasurer, and get some additional minds involved whenever there's something that needs to be reviewed, and then give the Board of Supervisors the best information possible. Automation, automation goal committee, number seven, provided information and automation resources, and required to effectively meet private and public needs. That is specifically through our IT department. Um, they've been very proactive over the years. Obviously, this is an interesting one because it, it changes constantly. And there have been meetings required to look at systems and the cost of systems, which then go into the finance committee. Um, number eight, economic development. Actively support economic development in Delnor County. That's very wide-ranging. That gives myself, the Board of Supervisors, a lot of leeway to go out and look at different options. It's similar to my earlier report where I met with the entities out of Southern Oregon to look at regional economic development. Tri-agency has been a big part of that. And number nine was public and private partnerships. And although partnerships can be rocky at times and be on and off, we have attempted to be partners in every way, shape, or manner, especially in a regional format and locally, in order to maximize our resources. Um, those are the basic goals. I took it upon myself to look at a couple of others that I know have affected the county over the last couple of years. And I threw in their proposed goal number eleven, uh, which was resource and environmental coordination. Some of that is strictly in relationship to coordination with these state and federal agencies and getting information earlier in the process. So the Board of Supervisors is not in a position of reacting, but be proactive in, in addressing issues, coming forward with solutions, because a lot of times, we will have solutions. Uh, we talked about one item just earlier with the Klamath closure. Those types of things can be vetted early, and we may not have this issue. Maybe we will, but we'll at least be in the, in the fold. Um, the environmental coordination, more to the large environmental documents and changes and plans that come forward from the federal government as well as the state government. Um, they require early coordination also because we need to be able to put resources on these issues and determine what our stance is going to be, and recommend to the Board of Supervisors what additional work may need to be done, and financially, what we need to invest to do that work. Um, public safety was proposed goal number twelve. And I bring that up because I think we, we face an opportune time. Uh, in Delnor County, we have a lot of new department heads. We have a new sheriff. We have a new DA. We have a new probation officer, chief probation officer, sorry, Lonnie. Um, and in working with the public defenders, the judges, I think we have an opportunity here for some new ideas, some new ways of looking at, at using the resources we have, which are limited, and be able to sit down. Uh, the Community Corrections Partnership is basically a framework for this goal. Um, Chief Probation Officer Lonnie Raymond is the, is the head of that one there. And I'm sure that he would love to have some input to this goal committee as well as all of the other department heads, to see what we can do to, uh, like I said, maximize our resources, but also assist the department heads in coming up with ideas. At this point, in more of a workshop format would be to get some input from the Board of Supervisors and the public regarding what's on paper right now. Um, no pride of authorship on the two that came in. If there are additional ones, let's, you know, I'd, I'd love to hear some feedback. We would then like to put together a more formal approach to it and get some recommendations to formally approve the next round of goals.
Moving up to board discussion. Board members?
Yes. I, I, I think that the idea of having a workshop is paramount in making sure that everybody is on board with the goals. I remember when we did these goals, we had, I think we were at the big building at the fairgrounds, and we had tables out, and we had staff coming, all, all of the county people who are working for the county coming, looking at the ideas of the different goals and then adding things that they thought, oh, here's, this could work and that could work. And we could actually, we had input from, from, from the top all the way down to the newest employee could come and, and have input into what our future should look like and our goals. I think we also included the public. But it was pretty exciting because it got everybody kind of energized and focused. So I would suggest that we have a workshop where it's a community-wide event and where county staff can come. And, you know, when they look at the, at goal number five, and they think, well, I'm not interested in goal number five. I would be glad to go over here and work on goal number seven. You know, so people were able to pick and choose what they wanted to put as input. But it was pretty valuable. So I would suggest that we move in that direction.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I think the addition of the two, uh, two new goal committees is, is a good idea. I think we, uh, we need to move forward with those.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Excellent idea. I would concur. I would like to perhaps consider a twelfth goal in there, Jay, one in which expands our knowledge of what other governances in our community are doing. There seems to be a disconnect with the left hand and the right hand, where things come up and then there are misunderstandings and information is not correct. What is the city doing? What are the tribes doing? What's the state doing? And how it integrates with what we are doing in our community. I know we have a quarterly meeting, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and that's the whole purpose of that, is to share. It functions quarterly. Perhaps it should be moved monthly. We're gonna have a meeting in May. And perhaps that's an area that should be a goal of how do we work with our individual partner governances so that we can evaporate, mitigate some of these misunderstandings on who's doing what and where. So especially in areas with involving the city, where water issues, about conservation, do we need to be part of the state project when we have sixty inches plus of rain a year? We should be working together with the city and developing something to exempt us from this kind of thing. These are the kinds of issues that should be on a, on a goal, and I would suggest that we look into relationships between other governances as a twelfth goal.
Supervisor Gitlin, I couldn't agree with you more as far as needing to do that. But would you look at goal number nine, partnerships, which is continue to build and maintain partnerships with new and existing public and private entities? Could I think perhaps it'd be redundant to add another goal that says the same thing? Do you think we could accomplish that under that goal?
I'm not sure nine is working, then. I think it maybe needs to be delineated and, and identified appropriately. So, there you go.
Okay. I, to a fault, have never been one to grandstand. I brought these forward in 1999. And you're right, we developed ten goals, and then we had meetings within the Board of Supervisors, department heads, public, to delineate what the objectives under those goals would be. Um, and it worked. It was revisited a few years later, and it's been a long, long time. It's been ten years. Um, I think it establishes a process and a very positive direction. So you can continually check yourself against, is this one of our priorities? And does it fall in line with one of the objectives that we have, to positively govern this community towards a better way? So I do want to see the infrastructure split back again, uh, away from future facilities. Future facilities is buildings within the county, structures within the county, whereas infrastructure is broadband, it's roads, it's airports, it's, uh, and there's a whole bunch of activity in that direction, especially new policies coming forward with broadband. So I would like to see that done. I think as a next step, I think first, by consensus, I think the board likes this direction. I think it would be appropriate to set up a workshop to start talking about the objectives within those goal committees. I don't know, I'm open to whether you wanna have the goal committees meet themselves. Sometimes you don't wanna start from zero, but you wanna have something to focus on for a discussion? What's your pleasure on that? None?
I would like everyone to just
All right.
Have a time where dialogue can happen.
Well, let's, let's start with that, then. Let's start with a workshop to talk about objectives within these goal committees, and what would be appropriate for staffing of these committees. And then I'll revisit the appointments of the supervisors that can work well and communicate, and maybe have better knowledge on a certain goal as opposed to another. And then also a process to engage partners within the goal committees, much like the economic development one with the Council of Economic Advisers, um, and go from there. Public, you wanna weigh in on this?
Hello. My name is Judy Ranger, and, um, I had a family of nine children, and we loved this community. We came to this community because we liked all the walks, all the nature, the, the different variety of nature. And we took our children to everything there was out here. And, and we loved it so much that when we had moved away, we had came back because this is what we enjoyed. But unfortunately, um, we regret coming back because the social services had unjustly taken all nine of our children. And, um, the, this is something that needs to be investigated in this, not just this county, but all over. Um, what I am about ready to say, um, it is hidden, and most people do not know about it. But if you look it up, you will find insiders speaking out. Um, my daughter wanted to go live with our rich landlords on their horse ranch. They promised her college. They promised her a lot. They used to be a lawyer here in this county. And, um, and so they knew what to do. And John Alexander was also in And John Alexander was also involved in helping my daughter do what she did.
Ma'am, does this have anything to do with the item that's before us, which is the goal committees?
Yes, yes. I think that there should be another goal. I think that this county and many other counties should investigate what the social services do, but they also should help reunify families, not tear them apart. We had a lot of, anyways, please excuse me, when you spoke to me, it made me nervous, but I'm already nervous. But anyways, I'm sorry. They allow one judge to make the decision to adopt people's children off without a jury, without witnesses, without evidence, without due process. They hire their own psychologists to falsely diagnose, so that they can have the justification to take children away. And if they're adoptable, all of our children were healthy, smart, well-behaved, happy children, and each one of them were adoptable. And if you investigate the matter, the social services, if they, this county is the third in California highest in taking children away. If they take more children away than they did the previous year, they get their federal grant money. And this is very important, because families need to be reunified, not torn apart, and we need a chance to be able to defend ourselves as parents. We never got that chance.
Can I ask you to wrap it up, please?
Okay, well, please investigate this.
Okay, thank you. And I think that that can fall under the purview of safe and healthy families, the goal, which is to empower our community by affirming safe and healthy children, families, and individuals, and something we can definitely take a look at. Any other public comment regarding the goals? Then, Jay, do you have anything?
Well, the idea of meeting with the individual goal committees and the staff, I think we could probably combine those into one general meeting and bring them together and get some ideas in advance and bring those to a workshop.
I think, you threw me with the last sentence. Workshop for everybody, or you wanted to have the individual meetings first?
Well, I'd like to have the individual meeting meeting. I'd not have every one of the committees have to meet individually.
Okay, good, we're on the same page then.
And then come back with a time and date for a workshop.
So unless I hear opposition, that will be the direction of the board?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're running a little late. We only have one more item, and that's to discuss and take possible action to direct staff regarding the posting of "In God We Trust" in the Flynn Center, and for the direct staff to discuss and prepare alternatives for the board to consider as requested by the future facilities committee.
The item was taken back to future facilities. There was a discussion in regards to the direction given by the board, or a need for direction by the board, specifically to, number one, is it going to be something that the board is directing staff to do? And then essentially, what would the board like staff to do? Bring back alternatives, locations, et cetera.
In recognition of that, I would propose, if the board and the chair is willing, that we create, I'm not sure if a committee would be appropriate, but create a committee of community leaders, maybe a faith, that could address this issue and make a recommendation to this board at a future meeting. And that's all I have to say at this time.
Would you, I think we're looking for direction for future facilities as part of a process, would you envision it could be accomplished by letting that be the forum?
If that could be the forum where public and maybe leaders of faith could attend, that would be great.
I think where we ran into a problem was, when we sent it to future facilities, it was never agreed upon by the board as to what the direction should be for future facilities.
Sure.
And so here we are.
Supervisor Hemmingson, Gitlin?
Yeah, I agree that I'm on that future facilities, and there was not clear direction from this board on whether we have adopted this as the county's, part of the county's logo, part of the county's, you know, whatever. So there was, I guess there was a little apprehension on staff in taking this on without clear direction from the board. So I just think we need to decide, is this, are we agreeable that this is something that we want to put up somewhere within the Flynn Center? And then future facilities can bring back a design and a placement of that, if that's what the direction of this board is.
I would actually concur with my colleagues, supervisors Howard and Hemmingson, that I had actually submitted it as a board action item. Here it is, right here. It isn't on the agenda with any action, there's a resolution attached to it. But besides just faith-based community, I think this is very much a public matter. I think we should table this until our next meeting and invite the public and our faith-based partners. I know the pastors meet periodically and discuss issues. But let's get full public input in what is "In God We Trust." It's on our money, we all know that. We talk about it when we do Pledge of Allegiance under God. Where do we have a problem in terms of putting it underneath, I can't see it from here, underneath our great seal? The city council has already acted on this, in terms of their own building. They don't, they share the facility here as a tenant, but they, in their own building, they have "In God We Trust" above its seal, its city seal. So the city, I would think that perhaps Mr. Serini'd contact Mr. Palazzo to see what input the city would like from the county, or vice versa, to have our CAO and the city manager actually discuss it. Because the city has already acted on it within its facilities as of January of 2011. I'm told they want to do something, again, in another action to reaffirm that on its upcoming action, but I don't know that factually, and I'm not privy to that agenda. So I think I'd like to have this matter tabled until the May 11th meeting, where we can invite the public in and actually discuss this matter in a, unemotional if I can say that, in a clear manner, as to find what is "In God We Trust," is it appropriate? 113 cities and counties in California have done that, 500 across the country, they've acted on this, City of Crescent City. So I think there's a good discussion, which hopefully we'll have on our May 11th agenda.
I guess I'm a little confused. It seems like this is on our agenda. This is an invitation to the public, and I think there's some of the public that are here to speak on this matter. Looks to me like there appears to be a few people out there that may want to speak on it. So I don't know why we, this is discuss and take possible action.
Well, if I can respond to that, Supervisor, I submitted on the board action, the adoption of the resolution "In God We Trust." Here it is. It's not in your packet.
No, it's not in our packet.
May I speak, please? I'll give you the floor in a second. Nor is the resolution I attached to it "In God We Trust." It's missing. So to discuss that without having all the information on there is perhaps not a full, robust discussion. Maybe we need to include that and then discuss alternatives at that time.
Unfortunately Supervisor Gitlin doesn't understand or wish to follow process. When you write an ordinance or a proclamation, an ordinance, resolution, it must go through the county council for review, which it did not, nor to the CAO. And it circumvented the intent of this board, which was to get feedback from the goal committee of future facilities by you deciding yourself of where this should be placed. So it is appropriate that we discuss that today, and if the board wishes to incorporate that somehow in the Flynn Center, that we give that direction to that goal committee. And that goal committee, from what I'm hearing from four of the supervisors, would be that committee that would vet this with the public, with staff, and with supervisors. And with that, I'm going to open it up to public comment.
Just so that I, Steve Perez, Crescent City, California here. Just so I understand, before I make a discussion here, present some ideas here. As I read this here, what's on the agenda is to discuss and take possible action to direct staff regarding the posting in the Flynn Center, and direct staff to discuss and prepare alternatives for the board to consider as requested by the future facilities goal committee. It sounds to me, based on what you've said here, that the decision about placing the words "In God We Trust" has been made, that it's going to be done. The issue appears to be where?
No.
Okay, I'm just reacting to how it's worded here. Okay, so I think that, that I think is part of the confusion for us here in the public as we read this. The second thing I do want to note is that it appears as if this had already been referred to the future facilities goal committee, and that there was some sort of discussion. And I'm quite accustomed to reading the documents that are online supporting the various agenda items. And there was no written response back, not even saying, hey, we can't decide. So it leaves me, as a public member, somewhat in the dark, not having had an opportunity to understand why this is coming back without any kind of recommendation, or lack of recommendation. So I just want to make those two points. I think there's a couple of ways you could look at this particular issue. And I think the rodeo presentation today gives us an opportunity to look at it from one perspective, and that is that the issue of "In God We Trust" is not just a spiritual issue, as much as it is part of our heritage as a nation. And it is part of a period of time that had some lengthy continuum, that allows us to reach back and say, we can post this on the basis of it's a part of our national heritage. And it is, in fact, reflective, in the broadest terms, of how many, many Americans feel about a relationship with God, however it may be defined. And I would encourage, from that perspective, that it be a unifying, from the point of view, that we post these words, because it in fact is part of our national heritage. I think the young women today spoke very eloquently and reflected that in a very powerful way, when they spoke about values ingrained into their lives. I see that my time is up.
Thank you very much. For a point of clarification, Jay, do you want to explain how we got to where we are and that there have been no pre-decisions?
The issue and the resolution had come to the Board of Supervisors through a solicitation, which was forwarded out to all the supervisors by the clerk of the board. The item was brought up at the last meeting, and the decision was to forward it to the future facilities committee for recommendations. The confusion at the future facilities meeting was that the board had not taken action on posting it, first of all. And then, second of all, if they had any type of direction for the future facilities committee as to what they were looking for, you know, was it raised letter? You know, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. But primarily, the first question is, is it going to be posted? And then staff would take the time to go through the steps of coming up with alternatives. What's the location? As you can see, in the board chambers themselves, we haven't posted anything on the walls. There's a, basically a non-written policy from years ago, that we wouldn't put anything up on the inside of the chambers. That can be changed, but that is what we've been working off for years. And then, most of the items that were brought forward in the past that were to be posted, whether they were gifts, as you can see, out in the lobby, that's where they were. So, you know, there was some confusion through the committee as to, you know, what direction does the board want to go in? And then the time would be put in to come up with those alternatives.
So my understanding was, is that the future facilities wanted the board to say that they actually wanted it to happen, before they wanted to discuss what it was to look like or where to put it. And so that's why it's back before the board today. To ask, to beg the question of the board, do you want to engage in this and adopt proclamation regarding "In God We Trust"? And that's the first step. And if that passes muster, then we direct it to future facilities with input from the board, to bring back some direction that the board can then authorize as far as placement of that, and what it's to look like and where it's to be. Now, trying not to process us to death, but that's the road that we're on for this particular item. I hope that clears it up a little bit. Anybody else who wants to speak to this? Yes?
If I understand, Andy Larson, County. If I understand just what you just said, then you could take a vote today that would put it back to the committee. And I would think we would honor our heritage, and as it was well put, and put it back to the committee and get on with it.
Next, please.
Ed Edwards, Crescent City.
I like your shirt.
Thank you. I did not come prepared to speak on this, in all honesty. I just got back into town last night, yesterday evening. I wish I would have been prepared. It sounds, though, to me like this is something that nobody's, I'm not sure if I totally clearly understand it, but it sounds like something that is not quite have been decided on yet as to where we're going with this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I do, obviously, it is on our money, as Supervisor Gitlin stated. It is, is, and should be all over our country, because this is what our country was based on, the formation of our country. And I would like to see a lot more public input, and I'd like to see the public informed of a meeting that would relate to where, different locations, where this should be That's the main, I don't know, like I said, I didn't come prepared to speak on this appropriately and/or fully. However, I think Supervisor Gitlin's idea of bringing this back on the May 11th meeting here is a good idea, from the standpoint that the public, the general public, should be able to have more of, more time to put their comment in, let their feelings be known. And God is important in this country, it's obvious. Very, very important. It's what our country was formed on, it's what our country is based on. When they started taking it off of certain public buildings, I was abhorred by it personally. I know many other people, millions of people, that were also, that also felt the same. And so I would like to see, that's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see the public be, at least by the minimum, notified in the Delnor triplicate, that they could attend a meeting here at the board, to be able to express their own feelings on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you for this opportunity, Ms. McClure, Chris Howard, Mr. Finnegan, Jerry Hemmingson, and Roger Gitlin.
Please state your name, please.
My name is Moira Broadwell. I have lived in this community for 12 years. My husband and I retired here. I'm originally from England, and I became a U.S. citizen several years ago, which I did through the- did through the legal requirements, not illegally. "In God We Trust" is very, very important to everybody living in the United States who are citizens. It is a moral obligation. It was founded on freedom of religion. It doesn't mean to say that you have to be one or another religion. It gives hope to all those people that came through here, Ellis Island. And I am strongly opposed to the fact that this is even an agenda in America. We have lost so many rights in this country. You can't have a Christmas tree, you can't have a nativity scene, on and on and on. And I am very, very upset that there's even a question that you could put a plaque up for "In God We Trust," its integrity in America that is failing. And I think that if you just put it to a test in Crescent City, that plaque would go up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? No?
I'm glad every, my name's Lindisso County. I'm glad everyone has strong convictions about their God and everything, but I, what's the purpose of it? What purpose does it serve? It divides people. Everybody has a right to their own religion, but who in Crescent City can say they're godly, or any for, for that matter? And so when you walk in here and say "In God We Trust," what God are you trusting? That's all.
Our trust in God is the reason why this has happened to us, actually. This all started because we came to a community where we dressed different, we lived different, we, we had good morals, we didn't allow boyfriends with our children until they're ready to get married, we were modest, and we were different, but in good ways. We had family values, we had a lot of, of things that aren't really taught anymore these days, but it's not, it wasn't harmful. And the thing is, is not only was this country founded on "In God We Trust" as a motto, but it also was that you can serve God the way you want to serve God. And there was nothing wrong with the way that we served God. We weren't harming anybody, we weren't harming our children. Yes, our daughter wanted to be fit in, and so that was hard for her. But before, none of our children thought they were being deprived until people told them they were. And, you know, this is very important, you know. We, they told our children that we, because we're different, and here we're supposed to be allowed to serve God the way we want to serve God, that we must be abusive and we must be a cult. And so this, this is something that, okay, if you don't want to put up "In God We Trust", let other people live "In God We Trust" if they trust, if they so wish to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? No? All right, back to the board. Direction? Supervisor Gitlin?
I'd just like to address Ms. Suter just for a moment, and then the, all you who were here today to speak on this issue. This isn't about religion, Ms. Suter. I want you to understand that very clearly. I'm a Jewish person. This isn't about Christianity. This is about God. It's that umbrella that is within us, within me, maybe perhaps not within everybody, and they're atheists. So this is atheism versus theism, that's all it is. It isn't about whether someone's a Muslim or an LDS member. This is about God, and does it define us? Is it in our fabric? This is a, do we want to adopt this as our national motto, and in Del Norte County? As I mentioned, there are a number of other governances across the country, and in California, cities and counties, and state. It's, it appears in our House of Representatives, it appears in our Senate. So this is about God, and whether we want to adopt it, and that's as simple as. And I'm going to make the motion at this time, because I can see that this is an issue that is deeply reflective. I'm going to make a motion at this time to table this until the May 11th meeting and take no action on it, so that we have full and vetted, robust discussion at our next meeting. That is my motion.
And hearing no second, we're going to proceed to shoot it to a committee, I believe, if the board so agrees.
I would, I would make the motion that we, that we do intend to put up the words "In God We Trust" and push that to the future facilities committee to make a determination and recommendations on what it's to look like and where it's to be placed.
I'll second that. It's been moved, and second, further comments from board members?
I, I, I'm not in opposition to it, I'm not, it's kind of like I'm on a fence on this. I'm not in opposition and I'm not in favor. And part of the reason I'm not in opposition is because I know that, you know, our use of "In God We Trust" has been a patriotic, patriotic and ceremonial existence since the founding of this country. So I get that. The other piece is that I have such a personal opinion of God that I don't, it's going to be hurtful to see it as a fight, where I don't want to hear people, it scares me to think that I'm going to have to sit and have 10 people over here say, no, that's, we don't want it, and 10 over here that we don't want it, when my God unifies people. And that's the biggest fear I have. I'm not going to be in opposition to it being placed, but I, I, I get, my stomach kind of turns when I hear people that are kind of angry about it, you know, that you've taken God out of this building or that building. Well, it's never been out of my building. And so when I see it as kind of a movement of not what I would consider real, that I see as political, I get very offended because I don't want my God to be political. And so I'm going to go ahead and agree with the posting, but some of the testimony that I heard today, it was all about being political. And I, my God is not there. So, that's right, it's patriotic, it's patriot, and ceremony, I already said that, I recognize that. I don't have a problem with that piece of it. I have a problem with the pseudo-fight that's going to follow. That's what I have a problem with.
Supervisor Howard? No, nothing? Okay, I, you know, it's a non-issue. You know, and I tried to, as chair, avoid controversial non-issues and try not to allow for grandstanding, but I can't do that. People are going to continue to do it anyway. I hope that when it goes back to that committee that, you know, it gets vetted properly. If you want to advertise in the newspaper to have the public show up with maximum input, that's great, too. I remember when we tried to change the seal, we couldn't agree. There are numerous resolutions, some of them "You're the Child," some of them are goals, some of them commemorative for everybody that served as a supervisor. And we said, put it out there. If you want to have "In God We Trust" over the door, fine. Again, I believe in God, I believe in "In God We Trust." I carry it in my wallet, I say it in the Pledge of Allegiance. And, and I know when I walk through, you know, whether I walk through the doors of my church or not, I know there, everybody in unison is going to say "In God We Trust," and they'll have a little more focus. And, but even at home, I believe in it. And I'm, I am sorry to have to put pseudo-controversial items before you that shouldn't be controversial at all. And so I hope that the goal committee can navigate that. And so by consensus, unless I hear opposition, this board will be in favor of the posting of "In God We Trust." We are going to defer for recommendations from the future facilities committee. There will be a committee that will be duly advertised at a specific time for people to attend. And I know that that committee will, will hear some of the policies that you've heard before about the appropriate place as per, as per even our own policies here, so.
If I, if I could, you're going to get an opportunity, I think the public's going to get two opportunities here, because you'll have an opportunity to come to the, to the future facilities meeting and make your recommendations, as, as that committee will also make a recommendation to this board. And it's probably not just going to be one recommendation, there's going to be a couple of different recommendations on style and placement, and then that's going to come back to the board again for approval. So then you'll get another chance to voice your opinions then, and hopefully it's not a fight. We're not talking about a fight here. You know, we're, we're talking about just a discussion on where to place this. We've all agreed that we're going to place it, it's just a matter of where we're going to place it and what the appropriate place is for that.
And even though we've talked about options, it sure wouldn't hurt my feeling if that future facilities group saw the wisdom in bringing forth one recommendation that the entire board could adhere to. Please. And with that, let's consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the County of Del Norte. Do we have anything? How much damage has the Senate, the Assembly been able to do lately?
Well, I'll go locally, our local budget.
Oh, before you do, I want to make an announcement that something that was done very well was the passage of the Secure Rural Schools two-year extension signed, means money should be traveling back to this community for the difference between the 25% that we got and, and also fully funded for next year on the ramp down. And so that's, that is good news. That's millions of dollars through some of the lobbies of some of us that don't like to grandstand did, and it worked.
You took away my legislative.
Oh, well, sorry.
Budget-wise, we're working on the requested budgets, they should be in by Friday. We should be reviewing those and setting the meetings up for the following week. Directed at the fixed assets, if there's very few of them, but they'd be purchased by May 1st. Shooting after the net county cost as we typically do. And we're looking at the different, different professional services that are going to have to be addressing in the next fiscal year based on employee agreements and other types of things that are already in place. So right now, we're all focused on the requested budget coming in.
If, if I could just say something about the SRS, the RAC members, takes about a year to approve those members.
Right.
And we're short members, and so we need to make sure that we get applications in and vetted.
She keeps telling us that we're short, but she doesn't tell us what openings.
Right. You know, that's been, and the, the other issue was, can the current members continue on? And if that's the.
Need to reapply.
You need to reapply, but I don't think you have to go through the whole process.
We, yeah, last year.
Yeah. So anyway, that, that's a long process, and that can hold up the spending of those funds. And, you know, if, if we can't do that quickly, I mean, it could be a year out before.
Are we working through community development on that?
I believe so.
Okay. So working with community development, maybe you want to even put a little burb in the newspaper regarding those that might want to apply for a membership on the RAC and what positions would be open would be fantastic. With that.
I just have one question that I would.
I, I would like us to take a look at the South Beach designation, because when the district attorney apparently, and a sheriff, determined where it was no longer a swimming beach, what they refer to as a bathing beach, and the only thing that I can find anywhere is that that is part of a, the EPA identifies bathing beach based upon the bacteria in the water. It has nothing to do with are there people in the water or out of the water.
We've never designated it as a bathing beach.
It's, it's called a bathing beach, but it's because of the water quality.
Is that within our jurisdiction?
Well, every peace officer in California can enforce water safety regulations, but they can't choose to suspend them and say this area.
I, I understand that, but I mean, are we working with something that's already state law, that enforcement is supposed to take care of, and then we're trying to step in on something that's not our jurisdiction?
Well, that's where, that's where my question of confusion is, because apparently it was the district attorney and the, I don't know if it was the sheriff or the boating, that they made a decision that this area is not a bathing beach. So they chose not to enforce California boating regulations.
I believe they, I had a meeting with the sheriff and the Coast Guard, and specifically to get as much information as they could about, you know, the, the issue. They, I believe it's a, an existing code, I believe it might be penal code in it, it's more in relation to safety.
Right.
And the biggest problem is trying to evaluate distances and what, you know, who is safe and who isn't safe. And they're trying to determine how best to enact the law and enforce it and be able to, you know, do that legitimately. The Coast Guard deals with vessels, so they have an overlapping jurisdiction on some of this, but it's more to the safety end of it. Are they operating with, you know, personal flotation devices, those types of things? And if they operate within the federal channel, those, you know, those are the issues. So there are still some vagaries with it. I, I do think that what they were attempting to do is make the best of the situation to be able to have the deputies in the best position.
I, I just want us to have a plan. What, what is it that we expect and what is it that we can do or, because it's going to come back and hit us again and again and again.
Well, there is a pseudo-group working on it, myself, Jay, the Coast Guard, the district attorney, the harbor, the sheriff.
We're trying to pull as much information together so that we, if we overlap, we aren't doing something to just beat our heads against a wall.
We are trying to get proactive on it, because we know summer's coming.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Most part of it went pretty well, didn't it?
It did.
And I thought there was, I mean, from what I understand, they kind of, most of them kind of got along, it wasn't, I mean, there's a few, there's always going to be some, there's some when there's only one group out there.
Well, we'll figure it out, just like when softball wants to play on the soccer fields.
Is there soccer?
All right. Absolutely not. And with that, and thank you very much for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Steve, you're elected next time. You're here all the time, and you stayed to the end. You get the, the gold ticket. We'll ask you to lead the Pledge of Allegiance next time. Thank you for attending, we'll see you next two weeks.